Good evening and welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us for this public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing for an Eagle application for a project on Gall Hills Drive, Richland Township, Kalamazoo County. My name is Ryan Blasek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll be moderating the public hearing tonight. I just have a few logistical items to get through before we get the public hearing started here. I'm gonna go through the agenda here. We'll go through the introduction right now. And the big thing to know about the agenda tonight is we actually have two parts. To the public hearing, there's actually going to be an informational session where the applicant is going to present some information. On the project, and then we'll follow that up with some questions and answers. So you'll be able to ask a question about the project and the application after the informational session. And then the second part is going to be the official hearing. That's going to be where you're going to be able to make an official statement for the record. You have an opportunity to do that later on after the informational session. But we're also going to review other ways to submit an official comment in case you didn't want to make a statement tonight. And where to find other information and who contact with further questions. For those of you not familiar with the Zoom platform or how we've done these public hearings, all lines are going to be muted during the meeting today of the public hearing. So you'll be able to hear us. We won't be able to hear you. Although we will unmute you when it's time to ask a question or to make your statement. But you can submit a question at any time using the question box in your Zoom toolbar. So you'll see that in the bottom. Just type your question in and send it to us. And also, we are recording this meeting. It'll be on our YouTube channel and we'll direct you how to get to that after the webinar. Probably in a few days. Alright, so with that, I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff, Derek Harrelson and Kyle Alexander, to introduce themselves and get the hearing started.
Hey there. My name is Derek Harrelson, handling the file with Combsy District Office, and I'll be the hearings officer for tonight.
I'm Kyle Alexander. I'm also with the Water Resources Division, District Supervisor out of Kalamazoo.
Alright, thank you Derek and Kyle. Those introductions. So at this time, we're going to start the informational session. Ryan Kramer is in the, is one of the attendees in the audience. And so what we'll do is we will unmute or allow Ryan to unmute his microphone. And you're unmuted to our end, Ryan. Are you? Okay, it looks like you're unmuted.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for joining me, Ryan. I have your slides that you provided for the presence, for your presentation here. Like I mentioned, we'll have a Q and A session afterwards. It'd be great if you could stick, stay within about five or 10 minutes for the presentation. So it'll give us plenty of time for any questions and answers. So with that, I think this is your first slide. You can go ahead and get started and just let me know when you would like to switch slides.
Excellent. Again, just want to introduce myself. My name is Ryan Kramer. My wife, my wife, Brandell, is here with me as well. And we recently purchased this property in 2021. And ultimately, we're planning on building a single-family residence for personal living in the next couple of years. But first, we wanted to construct a seawall and some boat wells in order to start using the property immediately. As everyone knows, building a house takes some time, especially with supply chain issues as of today. For this project that we are proposing, we're planning on hiring a professional licensed seawall company. Someone that's been proven in industry and has already done work on Gull Lake. And the next couple of slides, I'll show some pictures of what we're planning on doing, but we're going to construct two boat wells for personal use only. We currently have a speedboat now and plan on purchasing a couple of other personal watercrafts to go along with that. And the nearest property line towards the Gull Lake, we're planning on installing 150 feet of field stone riprap to protect the shoreline erosion and allow animals to pass through. I've got images coming up that show all of the shoreline erosion that has occurred over the years. In addition, I would like to install 200 feet approximately of wooden seawall on the shoreline. I wanted to point out that we do own about 1,450 feet of that channel shoreline. And so essentially, we're affecting less than 19% of that for a wooden seawall. Next slide, please. So in the top left image is a topographical map showing the property lines. And also the length of the channel. We have a 375 feet approximately is what this project is going to consist of. And 1,075 feet approximately is going to be untouched and left in the natural state. I've got an image of a house there. That's the tentative plan of where our single-family residence is going to be built. And then I got a couple of arrows, you know, highlighting and zooming in exactly where this project is going to be on my property. All these images here are, two of them are taken right from the seawall company's websites. So very similar in nature to the wooden seawall down below and the boat well. The riprap, as you can see in the top right, is taken from a Google image. Should be fairly similar to what that looks like. Probably not as wide. We're looking about two to three feet visible there. We are working with the DNR. DNR has been out there. We walked the shoreline as well as I've walked the total length of the the channel with Derek from Eagle. He's actually come out twice now and we reviewed all of the material and the permit and everything that goes with that. I'm going to the next slides to show, you know, one of the main reasons we are trying to protect the shoreline is this erosion. On the left, there's a log sitting out in the water that was kind of holding some of the dirt back ever since we purchased it. And when I went out there last weekend to take these pictures, it had fallen into the water. And so just from the limited time we have owned it, we are seeing erosion occurring. You can see where the trees are now growing. Looks like they're growing in from the water, but they were in fact on the shoreline at one point. Last slide I have here, after this one, you can go to that. It's just more erosion. We've got this concrete drain pipe that's sticking way into the, into the channel. We'd like to remove that. Again, as well, it's just nothing but erosion all the way down there. Erosion's occurring from a lot of different means, boat, boat usage, going down that channel. Waves occurring from those, Gull Lake waves coming through, water runoff coming from the property. And that's an intro to what we have planned for, what we're proposing.
Alright, thank you for providing the information, Ryan. So at this point, we're going to go into the question and answer kind of part of this. And again, this is for, for questions on the application or the permit application or the project. If you had a statement that you'd like to make, actually, hearing portion, that'll be a little bit later. But to ask your question, if you have one, we talked about that Q and A box or the question box and your go-to toolbar. Or your Zoom toolbar, you can go ahead and type it in the Q and A box, and I'll just read those questions off to you. And then whoever is most appropriate can answer those. Or if you prefer to ask a question, raising your hand verbally, you can go ahead and raise your hands in your Zoom toolbar and we'll call on you. And then we'll unmute you. You'll be able to mute yourself and then you can ask, ask your question. We do have, looks like at least one or two people on the phone. If you're on the phone, you'd like to ask a question, you can select pound two on your phone and raise your hand and zoom and then we'll unmute you and you'll be able to unmute yourself to ask your question. So with that, I have a question in the question and answer box. I'll go ahead and read off. It's why boat wells, why not parallel docks like everyone on the other side of the creek?
Great question. I think if you've been down that channel, you know that it's about 60 feet wide and putting broadside docks in that channel on the other side would really reduce the path for, for borders to travel through. So we were attempting to minimize the impact to the channel by creating boat wells.
Alright, thank you for the question and for the answer. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Here we go. We got a couple more in here. How do you plan to, how do you plan to access the property when Gall Hills Drive is a private driveway?
We have needed access to the drive.
To the question. Has anyone completed an environmental impact study to know the impact of further development along the creek? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure who should answer that question.
Yeah, that should be Derek or?
Yeah, I mean, an environmental impact study is kind of a term that's more, it's kind of an official term. It's more used with EPA and like more investigations on contaminated sites. I don't know exactly kind of, you know, I think the answer is basically no. I mean, there hasn't, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but there hasn't been any wetland delineations on the property. I think the health department has maybe looked at it, done some approvals. We've done the pre-application meeting that we did to do the site inspection for the application. But that's all I'm aware of that, you know, it's the studies or inspections that relate, you know, it's kind of environmental issues on the site. So.
Okay, thanks for the question and the answer. So I have a hand raised. So Jay Devonford, I'm going to unmute you. You can unmute yourself to ask your question to the group.
Hey, so, so my question is, is if, if this were to be allowed, how would this affect the precedence of not only our channel, but the rest of the lake and others wanting to obtain additional permits moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, I think each permit application we're looking at, it's a site-by-site decision. So we're looking at the property, the request, you know, the requested alteration of the property. And I mean, one of the, you know, one of the things we're looking at is kind of the scope of what's being proposed in relation to the need in a lot of cases, what, you know, is in the immediate vicinity of the water body, things like that. In terms of setting precedent, I mean, you know, if the question is, will this or how will it? I mean, I, I don't know that it will and it's hard to answer that. I just know that we, you know, we have to take each permit application. We'll look at what's being requested. We have to kind of sort through the environmental impacts or the public comments. And then we look at the permit criteria that we have. And if it meets the criteria from its issue, if it's, if it doesn't, you know, if it's not issued or denied with maybe with modifications. But we'll look at the context of, you know, understanding what's, what's out there on the lake and the channel and the concerns of folks nearby in our, making our decision.
Thank you for the question and the answer on that. I've got a couple more here in the chat still, or in the question and answer boxes. Has the Drain Commission looked at the erosion that is being described, that you're describing?
I don't know, Ryan. I, I don't, the Drain Commission, I don't know that they'd be involved necessarily from a county grain perspective, from a soil erosion standpoint. They do have soil erosion program. And I don't know, Ryan, if you've applied for a soil erosion permit. I recall that there was any soil erosion measures. There's not a lot of earth change on site. I mean, there's been some trees cut. So I don't know. I guess, Ryan, maybe you could speak to that if other agency staff have evaluated the property.
No, I have not pursued that.
Okay, thanks. I have one more question here at this point. And I'm not sure if we can answer this or not. Is there a minimum width from the DNR for boats to pass? So I don't know specifically from the DNR. I didn't think you can speak to that and a question, Derek?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's, is there a minimum buffer setback or something from DNR for boats to pass from a dock or, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure totally what the exactly what they're asking. I know on some lakes, there's guidelines that, you know, the watercraft are supposed to stay 100 feet from the end of docks, things like that. Have some lakes have a certain circulation pattern or boats are supposed to go, you know, clockwise or kind of clockwise. But I'm not aware of a minimum, like a formula to determine, say, how far a boat should be from the shoreline or something like that in the channel.
Yeah, that's a question. And the commenter replied against it. Yes, the question is to pass between docks, I guess.
So what I was just going to add, when we're reviewing a project under 301, we do look to see if a proposed project will interfere with navigation. But there's not, at least in our statute for our review, I can't speak to for DNR, there's not a set distance that we're, we're looking at. It's really just looking at each site specifically to determine if there is an impact on navigation or not.
Okay, I think, I think that helps. I've got a raised hand here. So Bob Bears or Bears, I'm gonna unmute you on my R end. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question.
Yeah, I guess following up on Jay's earlier question about a precedence. This, this channel is very narrow and very shallow, obviously. So a lot of additional boat traffic wouldn't be desired. If we're allowing boat wells to be dug at this part of the channel, is there anything that would prevent going up the, the other 1,000 feet of the channel and every 100 feet putting another, the boat well and putting another 28 boats up there? And that, that would be the only concern I would have was just increased traffic.
So you're talking, Mr. Bears, you're talking about a scenario where other, the landowners on the other side of the channel install or wish to install or propose to install their own boat wells?
No, Ryan owns, Brian said in his presentation, he owns 1,450 feet of frontage, which makes sense. And he's developing 300 of it. So that leaves another 1,000 feet up there. He could sell off and people could dig other boat wells back in there every 100 feet and put another 14 boat or another 10 boat wells in there, right? So it's, it's the question Jay asked around precedence. Are we opening ourselves up to that? Or is this a one-off? Okay, you're gonna put this in and that's it?
I would just say that we can't really speak to hypothetical future scenarios. I think Derek probably answered the question best. When he said, you know, we, we look at these case by case, application by application. We're going to review them against applicable criteria. And of course, we also will take into consideration conditions on the water body that the activity is being proposed. But, you know, it'd be tough for us to speculate on any future scenarios that haven't taken place yet.
I think for that.
I can speak to that as well. No one, no one on this call knows me. So my word can only mean so much. But due to the private drive that is there, we aren't able to section off any of the property. So we own the entire the entire 6.9 acres. We have no intentions of selling that or parcelling it off. And we have no intentions of putting more boat wells in. They're expensive enough as they are. So this is all we plan on doing. I did walk the rest of that 1,000 feet with Derek and he advised that there's real erosion down there is, some is occurring, but not to the extent that we see in my images here. So for the foreseeable future, I don't plan on doing any, anything with that. Definitely no boat docks, anything in the site. Again, that's just my word. No one knows me, but figured I'd say it.
I will thank you for that information. And for the question. Alright, I have a couple more in the chat here. And I think maybe Ryan, we most appropriate to answer, but so and the thing, I think you had addressed this or talked about this a little bit on why, why the wells and not the docks again. And then maybe while you're unmuted too, if you could speak to the erosion. The question is if it was caused by the trees that were cut down.
Yeah, to repeat myself on the boat wells, there's not a lot of, there's around 60 feet. And so putting another lift, broadside lift out in the channel, it crowds it. It protects my boat from, from not getting hit and protects me from hitting others when I'm trying to put on the lift. If that's what it ends up getting approved, then it seems like a more hassle for everyone on, on the channel. It'd be cheaper. And as far as the erosion, I haven't been there long enough. From the images, I'm no soil erosion expert, but this doesn't seem to all occur in the last six months when the trees had been cut. That's all I can speak to.
Let's say I have a hand raised. So I'm gonna go ahead and Matt Scholes, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you and then you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
So can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, so so pardon me for something that I didn't so your proposed plan was you wanted to put two boat wells in. So my question is, is, is there any reason why two boat wells? Because I think the balls are what, like 20 feet? Is that what you were proposing? Is there any reason why maybe one boat well would be adequate?
Did you catch that, Ryan?
About the second half where there was a question. So there's a question at the beginning. Everybody said I missed that, but I think you're asking why, why two boat wells instead of one?
Yeah, because if you look at the size of those boat wells, that means you're going to be able to fit, what, like eight boats in there? Because you're going to have a dock down the center and, you know, again, when you tell me, hey, I'm not going to develop the property, I believe you, you know. And you're telling, telling, telling me that your word is good, you know, I trust that it is. But I'm just kind of curious because I, I noticed when I was looking at the plan, there was like a hash mark where, you know, the lot that you were going to be, you know, building your home on. And then there was a hash mark there and there was another lot by the looks of the sketch. And then there was another boat well that's going in on that other lot. So I was just kind of wondering what your reasoning was behind that. And if one boat well might be adequate versus two.
Yeah, great question. The second part, I don't know what map you're referring to. So I can't speak to that, but the boat wells that I'm proposing are for basically four boats, not eight. So in each of the boat wells, one boat lift could fit in there with a dock in the middle. So I guess two lifts per boat well proposed. This is a dream property of mine. I plan on, I plan on retiring here. And so if I'm going to go through this expensive project, putting two, two, one boat well in that can fit two boats, sure. But I've got kids, kids coming up who may want some jet skis. I'm just kind of planning for the future and this is the time to do it. So I've been burned on the past where I've made my projects too small and regretted it. So that's the reasoning.
Well, thank you for the question and that answer. Alright, I have another question here. And again, this is, I believe in the context of future needs, the quote, and question is, will you be able to draw up a legal document that will state that you won't intend to add future boat docks or property, more property buildings? So I don't know if you can, if, if and how much you can speak to that. And I guess, is there anything you want to say on that question?
No, I don't plan on proceeding with that.
Okay. And are there any other questions? Alright, I'm saying I have a hand raised. Looks like Matt has raised his hand again. Just to give you a time check, we have about five more minutes for questions before we're going to move on. So if you have any other questions, feel free to enter them. And we'll try to get to them before we get to about 6:30, which is when we're trying to move on to the public hearing portion. So man, I'm gonna unmute you again. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure. You said you would not be willing to do a legal document that says that you would not put any more boat wells in on the property.
No, no, I don't plan on doing that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you for that question and the answer again. Are there any other questions before we move on? Alright, I'm not seeing any. So it's just, I have another question about not signing the document, about not signing a document. If your trust rose, why not sign the document? So I don't, I don't know if you want to respond to that any further, Ryan.
I'll go ahead and I'm just gonna say that that's for the purpose of our review. This isn't something that we would ask of an applicant. So it would not be required for our review or for the department to make a decision in this scenario. So it's not, it's not something we're asking of the applicant.
Alright, thanks for that clarification. Right. Any other questions? Alright, so with that, I think we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of tonight. Now, thank you, Ryan, for providing that presentation, answering the questions. And thanks, Kyle and Derek for answering those questions as well. So we'll move on. Right. But before we do that and kind of get into the actual hearing portion, just in case you decide not to make a comment tonight, or there's, you make a comment and you want to add to it. There's other ways you can make a comment on this project application. You can do it via My Waters. And the My Waters link, you'll see in front of you, it was a part of the public notice. And then it is for submission. And I'm going to read this out loud because there are people on the phone. Submission number HPD-RRXM-E3MQE. And then you can also by mail provide comments to Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, 7953 Adobe Road. A D O B E is how you spell Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. The comment period after this public hearing will be open for 10 days through May 6th. So that's how much time you'll have to make further comments. And so with that, I would like to invite Derek to read the opening statement for the hearing.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Folks can just bear with me a little bit. It's, I have to read from pretty much kind of a template script. So we're just going to get through this. So so good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Derek Harrelson and I'm the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle. I'll be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing tonight. An eagle submission number, HPD-RRXM-E3MQE. With me tonight is Kyle Alexander, who is a district supervisor in the Kalamazoo District Office. To describe how the hearing is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we're here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. There will be day, then be time for you to provide comments and we'll spend the majority of the time tonight listening to any It will be they then be time for you to provide comments, and we'll spend the majority of the time tonight listening to any comments. And then at the end of the hearing, I'll read a closing statement. So by way of background information, the Water Resource Division is responsible. For administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake stream or wetland. Constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks. And building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Public Act four fifty one of nineteen ninety four as amended, otherwise known as Act four fifty one. So we're here tonight because Mr. Kramer has proposed to construct a new wooden seawall. To place rip rapture and protection, construct two boat wells with a dock in each one. Dredge channel bottom lands and remove concrete structures and bottoms. Approximately one hundred and fifty six linear feet of new seawall would be placed along the existing shoreline. With approximately six cubic yards of backfill placed landward at the seawall. Approximately six cubic yards of six to eight inch diameter fieldstone rip rap. Would be placed along another one hundred and fifty five linear feet of shoreline. To a width of two feet and depth of one foot. Two upwind boat wells with wooden sidewalls, each measuring thirty feet wide and twenty five feet long. Are proposed with a total of approximately forty five cubic yards of material. Dredged from two areas of bottom lands in the channel immediately adjacent to those boat wells. Each measuring thirty foot wide or thirty foot long, eight foot wide and about two and a half feet deep. And then a two foot wide by twenty five foot long dock is proposed in the center of each boat well. And an existing concrete storm sewer pipe and tree stump would be removed from the channel. So in order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain require. Criteria set by part three oh one of Act four fifty one. So in general, under part three oh one, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the channel in going. So when we're doing an application for a permit under the provisions of part three oh one, inland lakes and streams of Act four fifty one. Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section three oh one oh six of part three oh one. First, that the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect. The public trust or riparian rights. And two, the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair. Or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the permit application an opportunity to provide information that. We that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria. That we must use in making the decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition of the project, we'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that by law. We're not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. So in just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the April seventh, two thousand twenty two edition of the Kalamazoo Gazette. So as we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide. You can raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. And just to make sure that everything is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. So first, Mr. Kramer's already had the chance to describe the proposed project. Second, we will start calling on those who have indicated in their registration, we assume that they would like to speak, make a comment. After we go through those folks, if there are additional folks that would like to make a comment, we will call upon them. As a reminder, if you are participating in the hearing via telephone only. All the directions of the moderator and how to identify you would like to make a comment, so I think Ryan can go over that again. How do you think we have somebody on the phone? And then you can also submit comments to us via My Waters, the email or via US mail. And then when all the comments are completed, we'll give folks one last chance to make a comment. So we're gonna have about four minutes per comment. When your name is called, we will unmute your microphone, and then just please state your name in any group or association that you represent. When you're making your comments, so we'll give folks four minutes, that should be plenty of time, we'll get to a three minute mark. We'll give you a heads up that there's a minute left. And then if we can please begin wrapping up the comments and within the allotted time, that we appreciate it, if we get to the four minute mark, we'll just. We'll just indicate the time's ended, so. So just ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight, please recognize that the Eagle staff here. Is is here to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. So the hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit. On the proposed project. So again, the the public comment period for the public hearing is open for ten days from today. Ending basically through May sixth, so ending midnight on May sixth. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered for Eagle's decision. And then following the close of the public comment period. Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications or send a letter of denial. And then you can find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Waters website. And searching for the application number, and I'll read it again, it is HPD RR XM. E three MQE. So thank you for your attention, we will begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement at this time.
Yeah, thanks for reading that, Derek, it was, can just recap a couple things that Derek just went through. I'll start calling from my list, there's actually only one person on that list of people who pre-registered to make a comment. So after that, we'll go to raised hands, and so if you wanna make a comment. Go ahead and raise your hand in Zoom, virtual hand using the Zoom toolbar, if you're on the phone, hit pound two. And again, you will have four minutes, I will give you a heads up at when you have one minute left at three minutes. And then when you start, just please. List your name and if you have any affiliation, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Actually, Ryan Kramer is the person on the list who indicated they wanna speak. Ryan, did you wanna make another comments, actually, I'll unmute you again to see. Did you have anything else to say, or did you put your name on there for the presentation?
I selected it for the presentation. Okay, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, yeah, no problem, so with that, Ryan was the only person on our list. So we're gonna move on to raised hands, so if you need would like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll start reading those off, and the first person. On in Zoom is Chris Shepard, Chris, I'm gonna unmute you, you can unmute yourself, and then begin your comment whenever you're ready.
Hi, actually, this is Scott, we're off the tone. So. Any kind of impact on that bank in one of the rules that the Eagle had is, I don't know how it cannot affect. Wildlife, we have mink, turtle, muskrats, a ton of wildlife that are on that bank and live on that bank. And what that was one of your main. Objectives of your department in order. In waterfall to 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 protect that area, there is abundance of it in that on that side of the creek. And this would affect it, and then also. The the our creek isn't even three and a half feet wide or deep, it's two feet, some of the boats can barely get out. So is he gonna dredge the entire canal to get that three point five feet, or is that area gonna fill with water? And then the final question is, he has fourteen hundred feet of dock, fourteen hundred feet of property, so. The the parallel docks could go anywhere there and not be. Just turn around, look at Lover's Lane down at the south end, those are my comments, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris. What's your comment, would anybody else like to make a comment? All right, again, if you're on the phone and you would like to make a comment, you can select pound two. That will raise your hand in Zoom and we will unmute you to make your comments, so I have another hand raised. All right, Matt Scholes, I'm gonna unmute you, you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Yeah, some, so my my concern is. If you look at how the water is flowing on on any given day in the channel. I'm just wondering with. The insertion of the boat wells. What that's gonna do to the water flow in the channel and how it's gonna affect affect that. So I'm hoping that when you guys look at this, that that's something that that is. Given careful consideration because that channel is spring fed. And I and I just, I'm just wondering what kind of environmental impact. Those boat wells are going to have, and and you're obviously gonna know more about that than than what what I am, but. It it is a concern and and, you know, I kind of. You know, reiterate the fact as far as what Scott was talking about too, because, you know, where my home is located. You know, I'm seeing the deer come up and, you know, drink from the bank and all the different ducks and swans and things coming in, so I I think that. You know, we we need to be mindful of that wildlife and try to preserve it in any way that we 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 can, you know, so. That's my comment.
All right, thanks for your comment, Matt. Any other attendees on the phone or were logged in who would like to make a comment tonight? Maybe while we're waiting a couple seconds, I just want to also reiterate, we're gonna go through that slide again that has other ways. To make a comment in case you didn't wanna make a comment tonight, and would prefer to write it in. Or provide it by another means, we'll go through that slide again, just so that you have it. I'm gonna give a couple more seconds here to see if anybody else wanted to make a comment during the hearing portion. But again, if you don't, you didn't miss your chance, there will be, there's other ways to make a comment, so with that. I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time. So I think we're going to go ahead and close out this hearing portion. Of the public hearing tonight, so Derek. You wanna go ahead and go through the closing statement?
Seems like it on mute, yep, thanks, Ryan. So, well, thank you for everybody took the time to to come to participate. For the comments for cooperation, we appreciate your interest in the proposed project, and that again, took the time to be here. So it would be, as we indicated already at the beginning of the hearing. You can submit additional written comments through May sixth, thousand twenty two, there's links I see in the chat. Multiple ways to do that. And then following the close of the public comment period, we'll review all additional comments received, and then we'll make a decision on the proposed project sometime after that. So just remind you, if you still wanna make a comment, you can submit the comments via My Waters. Via email to me or via US mail through our district office, so thanks you all for coming, now the hearing is now closed, have a nice evening.
All right, thank you for that, Derek. Yeah, as Derek mentioned, you can make a comment through My Waters by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office. Seven nine five three Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine, and closes through May sixth. If you have other questions, they maybe come to you afterwards. On the on this application, you contact Derek Carrollson, I'm gonna I'm gonna read off his phone number and email as well for those on the phones, two six nine. Five six nine three six zero nine, and that's haroldsonmi.gov or michigan.gov. That's spelled H A R O L D S O N D at mi.gov. So with that, I'm wondering if you had any final comments for us tonight, Kyle?
No, thanks, everybody for the participation, we always appreciate that, and then a special thanks to Ryan and Derek for moderating.
Hey, thanks, Kyle, yes, Kyle mentioned, yeah, thanks to everyone for participating in this, and for both Derek and Kyle for. Being part of the public hearing tonight, with that, the hearing is closed, thank you all for participating and hope you all have a great rest of your evening.